At this time, we'll call the August 18th, 2023, meeting of the Wilson County Planning Commission into order. Anyone wishing to give testimony before this board today, if you would, please stand, raise your right hand. I hereby affirm the testimony I give today to be the whole truth. Say I do.
I do, sir.
Thank you. We need to approve the July 21st minutes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Mayor Hutto has asked for a moment to speak. We're going to grant him that opportunity.
So, Wilson County Commission had passed this particular tag as a Wilson County license plate just a while back, and it takes a thousand signatures with $35 apiece to make that happen to legislature. They've made that happen, and a Wilson Central student actually designed this tag. So, what, so we had had a guy that donated some money. So, I've got about 20 tags that I can give to somebody for free, and we're trying to finish that. So, if you would like that tag, all I wanted you to do is just fill out the bottom of this, which is simply name, address, zip code, email address, and when the tag comes into the clerk's office, they'll notify you, okay? Now, and then you can come pick your tag up at that time. So, you'll have to pay your regular fee, like you normally do, but the $35 for this one is already paid. You won't have to pay for that. And then, when it comes due again, if you want to renew it, it would cost you $35, but you don't have to. But if you do renew it, the $35 goes towards Wilson Rides, which is an organization that we started here that volunteers, that carries seniors, like to get their hair cut into the drugstore and that kind of place. So, it goes to a good cause, but I just have 20 free ones, and it's offered to anybody in here that would like it, and if you have two cars at home that want to get them, please come by and sign up. We'd love to put these on somebody's car today. Thanks for giving me just a minute.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Tom, it appears we have no old business.
Sir.
We'll move straight into new business.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
We had one rezoning that went, as I understand it, before at least the, what they refer to as the review session of the City of Lebanon's Planning Commission. It was a rezoning request that was to be presented Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023, at 5:00 PM in the City of Lebanon Administration Building located at 200 Castle Heights. There was an application made by Danny Nicely to rezone his property from R1 to C1 neighborhood, but without going into all the details, it's my understanding Mr. Nicely and his representatives withdrew the request. I've been in conversation with Mr. Nicely since then, and I think he's maybe had a little bit of confusion about what was the best course of action moving forward, so he may very well reapply, but at this time, he's withdrawn the request.
No action on our part.
No.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is an application that's been made by William Clark with permission from property owner Stephen Coffin requesting to rezone property from A1 agricultural to R1 rural residential. The property is located on Bender's Ferry Road and contains approximately 5.28 acres, and as further references, map 28, parcel four. It's in Commissioner Chad Bernard's district, District Four. The applicant, William Clark, on behalf of Stephen Coffin, is seeking the rezoning of the property from A1 agricultural to R1. Again, it's 5.28 acres. County Growth Plan nor the County Land Use Plan provide any direction that would preclude development of zoning at R1 densities. The Growth Plan calls for the area to be maintained as a rural area or low-density area. The R1 zoning is specifically entitled Rural Residential. Maximizing the possibility for development densities allowed under each residential zone district at this time. With this in mind, staff feels the Planning Commission should consider the difference in potential numbers of lots that may be realized within the two zoning districts, both the existing and the proposed zone districts. Under A1 zoning, the 5.28 acres would afford approximately two lots as it's currently zoned, while the proposed R1 zoning would allow approximately five lots on the property. Staff feels the potential addition of homes may, however, overwhelm the capacity of this rural road network. Road widths along these roads are often not wide enough for two cars to pass easily, and what I'm talking about specifically is the roads that feed into an intersection that I'm about to talk about. There exists a rather unorthodox series of intersections between Gamble Cove and Tubbs Road, Riverview Road, Bender's Ferry Road, and Braid Road that may be an impediment to additional densities being established or encouraged in the area. While a subdivision of the property is typically viewed as a use-by-right, subject to standard zoning requirements and subdivision regulations being met, staff sees no incentive for the county to encourage additional densities north of this intersection due to the area's unique road infrastructure, both in terms of road widths of the various roads I just mentioned, as well as the intersection itself. A future road work and possible intersection realignment occurs, if that does occur, staff may be inclined to view the property more positively for the purposes of rezoning to allow the additional densities that perhaps an R1 zoning would allow. Staff's made the rezoning request available to executive representatives of the school system and received no specific feedback. In recent general discussions regarding growth in the county and impact to schools, the school system representatives asked that the Planning Commission be made aware that the widespread growth in the corridor going to West Elementary, which is already operating over capacity, that the development would currently be zoned for West Elementary School. Finally, staff has made copies of zoning requests or rezoning requests available to emergency services, and have, we have not received any feedback beyond what the WEMA comments for each item on the agenda would have been. Staff will note that the proposed rezoning falls within the limits of Legardo WEMA Station's five-mile ISO response zone. With concerns listed above, staff recommends denial of the request until such time as infrastructure is in place to provide for the additional density that would be allowed by this rezoning. The county engineer and stormwater department have requested that the applicant, Planning Commission, and other interested parties be put on notice that the presence of sinkholes, caves, wetlands, streams, and land areas that are extremely flat, marshy, or steep may affect the development of the tract and the total number of lots realized through subdivision development. And I say that just to say that site-specific constraints, as we, as it does develop regardless of rezoning, could affect the total number of lots. We gave you an estimate of how many lots the zoning would allow earlier in the, in the meeting.
Certainly.
This isn't in close or immediate proximity to a century farm based on the information we have?
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone here today to represent this case? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hey there, everyone. Does that work? Hey there, everyone. Good morning. My name's Patrizia Mordaka. Thank you for your time and the ability to speak to this. I totally want to respect all of the issues that were raised in conjunction to this. At a high level, our request would be that the, as he put it, the maximum potential number of lots would be considered and made available to us, which would be five. Reason being, two things. One, to his point, we might be forced to come down from there because of site restraints. So, from our perspective, we'd really appreciate the ability to at least start that process at five. Our motivations are the following. From our experience driving through that area, we've spent a lot of time there, talked to local property owners as well, and there's a couple of fairly large subdivisions just around the corner from it, across the street from it. I appreciate having the parcel up there to reference. There's three homes that are built in on extremely similar lots to what we're fixing to build. Because it's on septic, I love the fact that Mount Juliet in the county has that 125-foot width requirement for the lots. So, what we're intending to do here is five, if we can do it, five extremely stately, wide, spacious lots. We're looking to put beautiful homes on it, you know, high percentage or 100% brick, and really try to create something that's extremely consistent with the quality of home and the kind of the, you know, very majestic, beautiful, wide home that is very common through there and even mirrored across the street. That's kind of where we're coming from. Additionally, we also see site conditions such as the Braid Drive, where to the point of traffic mitigation, we are totally willing to potentially have one of the homes or two of the homes, you know, have a driveway that pulls off of Braid. That could alleviate traffic off of Bender's Ferry. But from our perspective, and when we were looking at this, we felt that five lots on basically an acre a piece, 125 foot wide, would be fairly consistent with the contextual development that's happened so far. The property owner, of course, you know, we don't know the full story, but from his perspective, he said that this is actually the last remaining piece of what had been family property, and that a lot of the surrounding development had actually been parcels that his family had been able to sell, and him being a longstanding member of the community, we wanted to help him maximize the value that he'd be able to realize from the property as well. And a decrease from five lots would only negatively impact him and, you know, him being a member of the community. So, all that to say, our additional goal as well is there's a very, very beautiful mature tree line along the back of the property, on our property line. We want to completely maintain that tree line. So, the total vision here is 125-foot lots, preserved trees on the back, beautiful homes, and additionally could speak to the traffic mitigation issue by pulling one of the lots off of Braid Drive. So, thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good morning. Hope you all are doing well. My name's Justin Wider. Got a couple notes here, but again, my name's Justin Wider. I actually reside there at 260 Braid, which is just the top property there. Yep, thank you. And I stand before you this morning to voice my strong opposition against this proposal here. You know, as you mentioned, I appreciate him coming out and being able to learn our neighborhood and our, and our community there, but I'll tell you, there's some issues that I'd like to go over with that. So, Mr., you know, so as far as development progress are important in our area, and I can fully respect that, I think it's appropriate for us to do our due diligence in what the impacts are, especially on the north side of that property, which I'll talk to in a second. So, a couple areas that I'd like to address, safety, environmental, and then some recent zoning outcomes that's happened. So, I'll start with the safety piece. For those that are familiar with Bender's Ferry, in the past couple of years, there's actually been a couple fires back in that area, both which have resulted in total losses. From my understanding, I'm not an expert, but the fire hydrants weren't able to provide the velocity and water needed to put out those fires, of which my property is one of those. So, this strikes near and dear to my heart and my family, which ended up being a total rebuild there. So, added, two becomes five. That concern continues to be a concern for us there. He had mentioned the properties or the developments up in the, in that area as well, Hickory Point, one to speak of. In addition to the influx of folks in there and the traffic that's come in, there's been recent developments in the area that approved large developments on Bender's Ferry and then the Davis Corner area. Now, that's going to inherently bring traffic into our areas, and as he mentioned, we have several unorthodox intersections in that area, blind turns, blind drives coming out. So, more people, whether it's my family or the families that move into these properties, they're going to continue to have to face those same issues that we do. Additionally, he mentioned the tree line up there, up on the north side there. What you can't see is there's actually a blue line stream that runs all the way down through there, and then if you follow that map all the way to the right, that runs into Old Hickory Lake. And so, with that, right now, there's a lot of obstructions that run in through that blue line stream. So, what I mean by that, dilapidated walls that have fallen down that don't allow water to come through, and then right there on the Braid side...
Do you need to lay the corner, sir, so you can point to where you're talking about?
So, if you guys notice on the north side here, right, right about there, there's actually a waterway that comes underneath Braid that comes through, and then there's a bridge that connects the properties together. That bridge also doesn't allow water flow to come in, so it doesn't take much water to stop, you know, to start flooding our properties. So, my property here will flood less than a half-inch worth of rainfall. Will start to flood the back part of my property, and it floods all the way through here because this blue line stream isn't able to function as intended. So, you know, we increased that. So, what it would end up entailing is infrastructure right here to support a bridge, to even allow any sites to be able to go on, on Braid Road there. And then, the last concern, you know, just coming over to recent zoning outcomes, you know, from my understanding, there was a recent, as recent as the past 90 days, two-acre lots were approved as a minimum site requirement to be able to build new sites. You know, I think it's important for, you know, us as local leaders to be able to set the precedents and be able to move forward, and us cutting that, that site requirement in half, I think goes against a recent outcome that was just approved for that area. Obviously biased because I live in that community, but we have a lot of wildlife, and I think being able to keep it at the two-acre requirement, I think, is essential to preserve that. So, what I'd leave you guys with is, hey, change is inevitable, and progress is important for our community. You know, I very much cherish that, but the potential negative impacts that I just mentioned about the environment, the traffic in our community, I just don't think we can ignore those. And so, you know, I think it's essential for us to be, I think it's essential that we prioritize the responsible and sustainable development of our areas and respect the values of our community. I urge each of you to consider long-term consequences of this rezoning proposal, and I'd ask you to join me in opposing this, this proposal, and I appreciate everybody's consideration. And if there's any questions, again, I live in that area. I have for years. I'm happy to answer any questions there may be.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Johnny, Johnny, pass that down.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today?
I have a question for him.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
How big is your lot that you own?
My lot is just at an acre. So, and to your question there, he had mentioned that's kind of the precedent set. My property was there prior to the recent zoning decision that we had just referenced. So, again, we were, we were in there before that decision was made.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've passed down a letter that we received that was more or less a form letter from approximately 12 to 13 members of the neighborhood. I explained to them that we typically can't consider comments outside of the public comment here. However, just wanted you to be aware, we had received some concern by phone and by email.
That's fine. We just can't read it into the record because it's not sworn testimony.
Right.
Okay? Okay? Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, sir?
I'm Mr. Rutger.
Come on.
Well, I'm, 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 yeah.
What, what is your name, please?
Rutger Reitmeyer. R-U-T-G-E-R.
Okay.
Yeah, just wanted to go over some of his concerns. So, the wall that he mentioned that where his property flooded, you know, we are open to potentially, you know, fixing that wall and making it so where his property doesn't flood and, you know, kind of contribute, coming together in a partnership with him to ensure some of his concerns are met and that wall, you know, is fixed, and ultimately the property does not, you know, his property does not flood, so maybe we can mitigate some of his concerns there. And then also, another one of his concerns, there actually was a fire hydrant put out in front of the property recently of Bender's Ferry, right in front of it. So, that's another one of his concerns that he mentioned, so we can definitely work with him, you know, and address some of those concerns. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public comment. Do we have any questions for our board, from our board?
Did I understand you saying adding a hybrid, is that what you said?
No, sir. There were, there was a re supply hydro put right in front of Bender's on the property in front of the, in front of the, in front of the...
Okay, okay. I didn't catch that.
Any other questions from our board? Okay, I will call for a motion.
Motion to deny based on staff recommendations.
We have a motion for Ms. Weathers to deny based on staff recommendations. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Thompson. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
That motion will carry seven to one, I'm sorry, eight to one now. Would Mr. Turner vote nay? Tom, they do have a right to appeal that to the County Commission if they so choose. They have to do that within...
They have to submit an appeal in writing within 10 days of this decision, and once they do that, there's a 30, 31-day waiting period, and then we follow the same practices we would if you had recommended approval. We advertise a public hearing. It's held at the plan, at the County Commission, followed by first and final reading by the County Commission. The only difference is it comes with a negative recommendation rather than a positive one.
Tom, how does the new regulation apply to this? I didn't catch that just exactly.
Well, right now, they can, it's 80,000 square foot minimum lot size in A1 zoning, so they would be entitled to what they could get out of a 5.2-acre tract using 80,000 square foot as their, their minimum dimension, which would afford approximately two lots.
But five lots will not sit on that property and meet the new regulation?
That's correct.
Well, how many?
Without rezoning.
How many would sit on it?
Two.
Two.
Yeah, it's 5.28 acres.
Okay. That's, okay.
All right, thank you. All right, Tom, we are now ready for site plans and plans.
The next item I have is a site plan for the McKethan Design Studio Shed Project consisting of one lot. This is located at 8924 Sturt's Ferry Pike. I'll pause for just a moment to let people exit. This is for a shed that the applicant began constructing and then realized he needed to get some zoning approvals in place before finishing. I will suggest that if you want to see a very nicely constructed shed, it is, it's one of the nicer ones I've seen in Wilson County. With minor technical corrections on the site plan, staff can recommend approval. It's at map 116, parcel 108, 108.01.
Anyone here wishing to speak on this case today? Is he out, are you Mr. McKethan?
Yeah, I'm Mr. McKethan.
The property is commercially zoned now.
What is the purpose of the new building? If you would, please.
Yeah, it's an old house.
I am from McKethan. The purpose of it was to make a shed for materials and storage of like small items such as wallpaper or stuff like that that we get for clients. So, right now, we have Clark's White Glove Delivery Service, which actually just moved to the Lebanon area, and, which is great, but it's a huge massive warehouse, and we have lost light fixtures, wallpaper, fabrics. Also, if y'all came over to our showroom now, we have like two bedrooms, two baths upstairs that we show our clients, and it's kind of different styles and different vibes, just for clients to kind of touch and feel and see different things you can do. Right now, one of the bedrooms are completely covered up by plastic boxes, fabrics, small samples, I mean, you name it, it's like a disaster. So, we built that, one, to kind of make it where we can store our items, and we wanted to put a computer in there, so if one of the girls are in there, they'd have to go back and forth to their office space, and that way, they could be in there and pull samples for the clients and stuff like that, right then and there, so.
It's truly a storage building.
Yeah, it really is.
And I would agree with Tom. That's one of the nicer ones.
Yeah, I know. People all the time, they're like, what are you doing with that? And we're like, ah, it's just a storage. And the girls are like, please call it Materials Library. I'm like, ah, it's a storage. Anything else?
All right, no, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Have any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
A motion approved by Mr. Thompson. We have a second by Mr. Woods. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion will carry. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Now, ready for the site plan for the prestigious Wood Furnishings on Murfreesboro Road?
Site plan for Prestige Wood Furnishings is being built on one lot at 4684 Murfreesboro Road, map 123, parcel 36.02, and not to be outdone in terms of uniquity, that white spot you see on the property, if you go out there, you might mistake it for a old concrete foundation. It is not. It is one big giant piece of limestone that they're proposing to build this building on, and it's, it's almost continuous, and it's flat as a pancake for the most part. So, the site plan does meet requirements. With the applicant's agreement with WEMA comments, staff can recommend approval. There are some aspects that I believe Dan may want to share with you about the size of the facility and the need for some additional fire marshal's requirements to be met.
Anyone wishing to speak on this case? Mr. Dean?
Hello, Charlie Dean with Dean Design Group here, representing Mr. Proctor, who's going to be the owner-operator of the facility. I think he's had a conversation with Captain Cowan yesterday about the requirements, and he's working to get those, those solved, and we can, I guess, agree to those comments, so we will satisfy those prior to building permit, but I can answer any other questions. This did come in before you two years ago. This was approved in January 2021, but the approval expired, so.
Is this north or south of Hartman Drive?
Oh, this is, this is Murfreesboro Road.
Actually, south of 231.
Right past Central Pike, so, or Chicken Road.
Oh, it's past Central Pike. Okay, okay. Your way out and out, okay.
Yeah, right past the, just off your screen to the top right is Dollar General.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Do you have anything you wanted to say, Daniel? Okay.
What, what were the problems with, Cap?
There, there was no problems. What, what he just said was that we needed to sprinkle the building, and so, we're in the process of getting those plans put together, but...
It's wood storage, isn't it?
It's, what he does is he, he gets cabinets in and essentially stores them there shortly until they go and install them at someone's residence. So, it's, they're not fabricated on-site. They're essentially shipped in, kind of...
Semi-tuscan, yeah, it's a semi-tuscan factory cabinet.
Yeah.
Charlie, while you're up there, James was just letting me know there are a few minor stormwater comments that you're, you're apparently working with Jerry Warren to work through, so.
I'll be happy to. I haven't seen anything from Jerry yet, but, but yeah, we'll, we'll get all that worked out, absolutely.
Hey, good morning. Just to, just to clarify Mr. Jules' question, when you have a woodworking shop, the minimum square footage is 2,500 square foot, so it's 10,000, so 25, anything above 2,500 square feet for a woodworking shop has to be sprinkled.
I get it.
Under the 2021 code.
And y'all are going by the 2021 code?
Yeah, that was adopted March 2023.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Hey, somebody's got to be the guinea pig, so, good for you. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Have any questions from our board? We have a motion.
You want to, yeah, motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations. For Mr. Turner, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Ms. Weathers. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion will carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is BNA Clean Energy Fueling Station. This consists of four lots at 1245 through 1401 East Division Street. It's referenced as map 77, parcel six, 6.01, 6.02, and 6.03. We have talked with the applicant about combining the lots for the development itself. The applicant does not desire to be, meet the traditional building materials criterion for their office because it's going to be a Conex-style office or storage trailer that they're putting in the middle of the property with the development. Staff has advised them that they may commit to some alternative, as is allowed by the commercial building standards for industrial development, and that might consist of something like a robust wall and fence arrangement with landscaping along the front of the property that contains building materials that are deemed acceptable for the ordinance. The applicant must agree to WEMA comments as well. This one is a little bit unique. This is probably the first one of these we've seen freestanding, at least. We've seen a couple of them accessory, or something similar accessory to some of the Amazon buildings, but this is a natural gas or propane refueling station to be used by specific clientele. I don't think they intend on it being open to the public just yet, although that might be in the offing in the future, as I've discussed it with the applicants. They're here if you wish to ask any questions about it. We had, because we were not familiar with them, we had quite a few questions about safety, and they've done their best to put us at ease with that. I have heard from, or my staff has heard from members of, officials from the City of Mount Juliet who have had questions lodged at them about it as well, so.
Okay. Anyone here wishing to speak on this case today?
We do recommend approval, though, of the site plan. It meets those requirements with the building material consideration. It meets those requirements with the building material consideration.
We need to, is, is that something we need to make a decision about or, or, or motions should be contingent on meeting building materials?
You can make a contingent. If we can't come to an agreement, we'll bring them back in front of you.
All right, please, go ahead, sir. I'm sorry.
Chairman Jones, ladies and gentlemen of the plan commission, good morning. Appreciate your time this morning. Ralph Anderson, CT Realty. We're a nationwide development firm. We've been engaged by our client, Clean Energy Fuels, to build a network of CNG, compressed natural gas, not LP, not propane, fueling stations across the country. So I'm working on the Midwest sites. This will be one of nine sites in the Midwest I'm working on here in this market. I think we've got ten or eleven completed, another ten or eleven in, in construction and then some more, eight or ten in entitlement. So just a little background on the initiative. To address some of Mr. Bashir's comments, you know, point taken with regard to building materials and meeting those requirements, we'll work with staff to accomplish that, whether it's the fencing requirement or, you know, changing the, the building style for sure. So questions for us on the initiative, you know, we, so I'm, I'm the development guy, right, the real estate guy. We had a clean energy representative slated to join us, who they really can dig into the technical. Last minute, they canceled their trip here due to a, a death, but I'll do my best to answer questions, whether it be functionality, safety, whatever. I can give you a little bit of background that this will be a net zero initiative, meaning for every vehicle that's fueled here with CNG, that's one vehicle that the ultimate end using client no longer owns in diesel form.
Do, do we have the site plan available?
There we go, yeah. So essentially off to the left side of the screen, that's what's called the compound. In a little background, the, the CNG, so, so this is the compound area here. That's the equipment, right? And then here would be a canopy where what we will do what's called fast fill. Fast fill is very similar to a box truck or diesel truck filling up with diesel about the same time. Here will be time fill. Time fill is very equivalent to an electric vehicle plugging in. So a vehicle would go out and to be clear, these are very, these, this facility would be what we call box trucks and semi-tractors. No trailers on this site. So you would plug a tractor in here overnight. It would have the right compression formula. Now we're getting into the technical, but CNG would, would dispense into the truck overnight and someone would come and grab it at their next route and go out.
The best way I understood it, planning commission members, was the, the compound on the left is a fast fueling station. The compound on the right is more like if you put your battery on trickle charge overnight.
Correct.
Except it's gas, not electricity you're feeding into it.
Correct. And all secured and fenced, perimeter fencing as well, obviously with Mr. Bashir's comment that we'll work through the aesthetics of the roadway fencing, et cetera. So that's kind of the functionality of the site. There is no natural gas quote unquote stored on site. The compound consists of some, some cylinders that actually contain the fuel once it's compressed. So this, this facility is served, albeit a little larger, it's served with a natural gas line from the public, public utility, just like any home or business. That's just captured on site, compressed through the, the equipment on site and then dispersed.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Any, any questions for these guys?
If there's any site questions.
Mr. Jewell.
So is the, is the, the slow load not compressed but just pumped in at, at line pressure on the ground where the fast charge is on the compressed arrangement?
I can't speak to exact pressures, but I think it's something along those lines. Fast fill would be at a higher PSI than, than the time fill.
Where you guys took the time to compress.
Yes, and to be clear, our ultimate client, Clean Energy, they've been in business twenty-five years. They've got a lot of what we call fleet clients, right? They'll take like a, a waste management facility where all the trucks park overnight since the garbage trucks are dispersed through the day. They'll time fill all night, but that's kind of an in-house location. To Tom's point, our initiative is building a network of these independent stations across the country, which this will be.
Where do you have any other facilities like this around here?
Around here? I mean, this is very market specific, driven by, by certain clients of clean energies, so none around here. We, we built one up in Columbus, Ohio. We've got outside of Chicago, Illinois. What else do we have functioning? Cleveland, Tracy, California, Davenport, Florida. So it, it's very strategic, nothing close by, but I can do the research with Clean Energy to figure out what other fleet clients they have, you know, in the area. This is not new technology, newer essentially in, in the fact that, you know, the, the facility here won't be on a, a client's own property or at their own facility.
Tom, where is this located exactly on East Division?
Well, there's, there's several residences kind of tucked back in the woods. It's the best way for me to explain it. It's past, it's this side of Clemens Road, isn't it?
Yeah, it's probably a half mile west of Jones Brothers if it moves.
West of Jones Brothers, toward Mount Juliet.
Yes, it's before you get to the fork at Jones Brothers.
It's got to be close to the city limits, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
And just to touch on that, I did speak with Mr. Bashir before the public hearing opened. He's had some dialogue with, I guess it's Mr. Martin, the, the city manager.
My staff has.
And, you know, we, we're open to the dialogue there. We kind of knew what, what is this development kind of materialized here. There may be a conversation with Mount Juliet, so we're going to engage Mr. Martin and, and, you know, give him the same background we have you all and keep this moving, hopefully.
And what is it currently zoned, Tom?
I, I won, yeah.
It's already zoned.
I couldn't remember if I won or I two, if I won.
Okay.
The, if there is an approval made, it would need to be subject to the WEMA comments on the property as well as the stormwater comments and the building material discussion on the, the alternative arrangement, using the fence to meet those building material and landscaping requirements rather than the building itself.
Okay.
If you're okay with them having a Conex style trailer for the primary. It's not.
Tom, is it, is it, is it between Beckwood Road where Brewer's Barbecue's been and Jones down there?
No, it's, it's past, it's closer to Mount Juliet than Jones.
Down there, Clemens Road.
And it's on the north side.
Cross railroad tracks?
No. It's, it's adjacent to railroad tracks, but.
Okay.
And this is, is Colton Doris with our, our civil firm. You know, he's, he's engaged, you know, with the county engineer, addressing all the storm comments, et cetera. So, you know, again.
So your influences don't cross the railroad track. Clients don't have to come cross the railroad.
Correct, they do not.
Okay. Any other questions from our board? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have anyone here, anyone else here today wishing to speak on this case? Any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Slowly.
We have a motion to approve from Mr. Woods. Would that be subject to the, the developer meeting the criteria with the building spec, with the planning office?
As well as stormwater and WEMA.
We have a motion approved from Mr. Woods to approve, subject to the staff recommendations and then the developer meeting all the building materials and waste, uh, stormwater.
Stormwater and WEMA.
And WEMA notes.
Yeah.
Do we have a second? I'll second that motion. Oh, Mr. Ricketts will be the second. We have a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor, vote aye. And those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. We're now ready for a site plan for Jones Brothers.
The next item on the agenda is just down the road. It's a site plan for Jones Brothers Contractors, consisting of four lots at Old Lebanon Dirt Road, references map seventy-seven parcel seventeen, parcel eighteen, parcel twenty point oh one and twenty point oh two. The applicant has agreed to landscaping and elevation requirements. The site plan meets all other technical requirements. It wouldn't need to be subject to stormwater comments and any comments from WEMA.
Are all these already industrial lots, Tom?
There is an agricultural lot. Is it in the rear? I thought there was part of, part of it up front. Is it right there? This one, yeah. There are portions of the A-one. The only thing they have going across those lots though are driveway facilities and possibly some drainage facilities. But the, the industrial, the buildings they're putting on are on the industrially zoned sections.
Okay. Anyone here wishing to speak on this case today?
Good morning. Joe Haddick, CSTG. As Tom mentioned, we're in agreement with planning WEMA and stormwater, following all, all conditions. This is the, you know, a small expansion to their existing maintenance facility. They're also adding a wash bay for their equipment, so just a minor addition. We'd like to add.
There are ones on not A-one. I misspoke, the non-commercial portion.
I know we, we had committed to the facade requirements on anything facing East Division after talking with the client and due to, many of y'all know Jones Brothers, where that sits. I mean, these two facilities are three hundred and fifty, four hundred feet off the road. There's approximately a twenty-foot elevation change in there. You know, if, if y'all would be open to considering a variance request for the front facade requirement and just due to it being set so far off the road.
They, they have the authority to consider alternative scenarios for meeting that criterion. I don't think they have the authority to give an outright variance. That, that would have to go to board of zoning appeals.
Metal and tilt panel, right, similar to what you've seen, so. And I think the tilt panel would comply.
The tilt panel would comply.
A lot of difference in metal and tilt panel.
That's right.
Is that what you were proposing?
I think that the wash bay is a concrete construction, I believe, like more of a tilt panel design.
This, this is a, a new operational.
But you can see back within the corner, I believe.
Facility for them, is that correct?
This is.
In other words, what you see in that photograph is the, is the present place that they've worked out of for years.
Yeah, and if you could, uh, yeah. So if you, if you look at that existing there, the, to the right-hand side.
Yeah, it's starting to act up. You might have to shake it.
So right here would be a brand-new facility for their wash bay, is what you're seeing on the plan. And then the other part of the plant.
I think I need new batteries.
Yeah. The other part of the proposal is extending, expanding this, this building, partially set by about sixteen thousand feet.
Okay. Do you have any other questions from our board? Thank you, sir. We have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second. We have a motion from Ms. Weathers, a second by Mr. Woods, to approve based on staff recommendations. All those in favor, vote aye. And those opposed? That motion will carry. Tom, I think, is it appropriate to address the, his proposal as to an alternative facade on the front of these buildings in a separate motion?
You, you can do that if you wish. Again, I, I think you could do it subject, kind of like you did with the, the previous case on the natural gas facility and just make it subject to them meeting criteria with us. And if they can't, they can come back to you or they can go to the board of zoning appeals if they want an outright variance to be able to build a metal building.
I'll make that a motion. Second. We have a motion and a second by Ms. Weathers. All those in favor, vote aye. And those opposed? Motion carries. Is that good, Joe?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now ready for Midstate Investments Properties LLC?
Who made the second on that? I'm sorry.
Ms. Weathers.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the final on Midstate, final plat on Midstate Investments LLC property, consisting of three lots at sixty forty Canesville Road. With minor technical corrections, staff can recommend approval. This is, also references map one thirteen parcel twenty point zero two.
Okay. Anyone here wishing to speak on this case today? Mr. Keith?
Are you removing the trailer?
Yes.
Okay.
Brian Keith, KNA Land Survey, and representing the, the clients here. I don't guess I have a whole lot to, to give you guys other than just answer some questions you might have. If you, if you guys would want to see a plat, I can hand some out if you'd like to look at it, but other than that, I'll just, just answer whatever.
These are A-one lots? Are A-one lots, all of them over two acres?
Eighty thousand.
You got souls?
I do.
I'm good.
The, the top, the topmost lot, I believe we're talking stormwater, it may need to be critical. It is critical. Okay, pad elevation, remember pad elevation on that one, because there is a creek that borders the northern boundary.
Yes. Okay. Anyone else here wishing to speak on this case today?
Is that the total piece of property they own? That's not just a section of it. I was thinking it was a little larger overall. How many acres in total?
Total acres is seven point six four eight.
Okay, I was thinking there was a, is there another development out there that takes in a larger plot of ground that maybe I'm thinking about that they have opening out on Sparta Pike as well as Canesville Road, or am I?
Oh, no, that, that's back towards town.
That's a different parcel, did I get it? Okay.
Any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
A motion to approve by Mr. Thompson. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Woods. All those in favor, vote aye. And those opposed?
No, he made fun of my, he made fun of my slicing plates. I don't know.
Are you going to vote against me?
That's what I wanted to do.
Motion carries.
He was right, it won't fit.
Ready for the re-subdivision of the Allen and Clara Jones properties, lots two and three, Tom?
Yes, this is a small re-subdivision of the Allen and Clara Jones property, lots two and three, breaking it into four lots on Bluebird Road, references map sixty-six parcel thirty-six point oh one, with minor technical corrections and stormwater review being complied with. Staff can recommend approval.
Anyone here wishing to speak on this case today? Mr. Keith?
Brian Keith, KNA Survey. Actually, there's two parcels involved here. That's, that is a single parcel, a one-acre parcel, and the parcel to the east of that is also included in this. So it, the, the four lots are coming out of two parcels, just so you'll know.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Do we have any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, staff recommendations.
A motion approved, first staff recommendation by Mr. Ricketts. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Weathers. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Tom, we're now ready for the plans for affirmation.
I'll tell the surveyor, I'll hope they'll save the apple tree and the dawn redwoods on the property. It's nice. The plans for affirmation include re-subdivision of the Mathis property on two lots at eighty-one Wright Road, map one thirty-one parcel thirty point oh one, re-subdivision of the Boyd Ayers Estate, Lot Two, consisting of two lots, and nineteen twelve Log Road, consisting of map one eighteen parcel, or references map one eighteen parcel twelve point oh five, and an amendment to the reserve at Horn Springs, Lot Seventy-Seven, consisting of one lots at the corner of Schuler Court and Ben Forkum Drive, and it's references map thirty-five I, Group A, parcel twenty-eight. And I believe that concludes the.
Okay. May I have anyone here wishing to speak on any of these cases?
Plans for affirmation.
Any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Jewell. Do we have a second?
No.
I'm sorry. We have a motion approved by Mayor Hutto. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Weathers. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. I will now open the floor to the public with anyone who has anything they want to share with us today regarding the business of the planning commission. Seeing none, we will stand adjourned.
Mike, did you have anything you needed to mention? Okay.
Let, let me ask a question right quick. We're talking, referring to WEMA, that technically now is the fire marshal's comments is what that is.
Would you, would you rather me call it the fire marshal's comments?
No, I don't care. I just wanted to make, clarify to everybody that the fire marshal office is now functioning and that's what that is.
Okay.
Yes.
Tom, did you have anything? I apologize.
No, I thought Mike might, but I think we're good.
It's hard to get in and out of you.
Enjoy the fair.
I'll take one.
Okay. Thank you.